All right, getting them. We're gonna start our committee of the whole. Everybody make sure that you have your phones to the non-audible. And I'll start off with roll call, Ms. Henry.
Alderman Mims.
Ian.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Cresek.
Here.
Alderman Emerson.
Here.
Alderman Scott.
Absent.
Alderman Van Buisker.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Absent.
Alderman Azier.
Absent.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Let me ask for approval of minutes from the following committee of the whole meetings. If you are not here and on this board or we're not at the meetings, you'll need to abstain. First be the November ninth, twenty twenty one. You can do these separately, is that correct, Ms. Henry?
Right. I think we can do them all together.
No.
Now, since some of these weren't here, let's go ahead and do it separately. So, November ninth, twenty twenty one, call the roll on that.
We need to make a motion to approve first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No move to approve.
Motion to approve, thank you. Second by Mr. Van Buisker. For the November ninth, twenty twenty one, many, excuse me, meeting minutes, media whole, call the roll on that.
Alderman Mims.
Yes.
Alderman Van Buisker.
Yes.
Alderman Hayden.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Alderman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Abstain.
Alderman Cresek.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes, abstain, okay. I didn't hear you speak. Okay. All right. We have five yeas, we need six. Correct? Okay. That fails for now. Do the August ninth, twenty twenty two. My motion.
Mayor, it'll be the same count.
I'm sorry?
It'll be the same vote?
Yeah, it will be for the twenty second one, and the sixteenth also, yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm, since this is not by ordinance, I don't think, I think it's just a majority of those present tonight.
Okay.
Can approve the minutes and Ms. Henry, is that, that you're understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
All right, so the first one passed, second one. For August ninth, twenty twenty two.
No move.
Mr. Van Buisker, second by Ms. Emerson. Call the roll.
Alderman Van Buisker.
Yes.
Alderman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderman Cresek.
Abstain.
Alderman Mims.
I have to abstain because I was absent on that meeting.
Alderman Garza.
Abstain.
Alderman Hayden.
Abstain.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. And last but not least, April, August sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Ms. Emerson, you have the motion, second by Ms. Mims. Call the roll.
Alderman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderman Mims.
Yes.
Alderman Cresek.
Stain.
Alderman Van Buisker.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Abstain.
Alderman Hayden.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the list, Myers, Chapter fifty amendments, what do you have for us?
Okay, so, I guess, before we get started, I just want to make it clear that I've been working on several of these items for months, if not close to a year at this point. City staff, if at any time you felt like I stepped on your toes, I apologize, but I wanted to bring this forward. And just as an open discussion, we don't have to vote on anything, we don't have to do anything, I just want to talk. So. So, legislation wise, amending Chapter fifty, if you guys pull up, it's in your packet, so, the first page of this is basically identifying that really Raytown has three industrial nodes that are zoned industrial, the north side along Raytown Road, down around Crane, and then kind of over by Hometown Heroes and kind of that part of town. Those are zoned M, we only have one industrial zoning designation, it's just M, different cities have different zoning, Olathe has M one, M two, M three, that can be divided into low density, median density, and a high density manufacturing operations. So, moving on to the next page. You'll see on there that there's, there's many cities in the metro that have kind of eased or intermingled their industrial uses into more of a mixed use, commercial use, or entertainment and dining use in these industrial areas to enhance economic development. Since, since one of the goals of the Board of Aldermen is to enhance our economic development, I felt this was pertinent to bring up. Just on the map of North Kansas City, keep in mind they have a population of about forty-five hundred people, so eighty percent of their city, eighty-ish percent of their city is in zone for industrial use. And within those industrial areas, you've got businesses like Chicken and Pickle, I, you'll see me there once every couple of months, Call Sign Brewing, Big Rip Brewing, Outlaw Cigar and Brewery, the Iron District. Anyone on this board or any of city staff ever been to the Iron District?
Yes.
Anyone in the audience ever been to the Iron District? It's pretty cool. So, that's in the middle of an industrial zoned area. In addition, North Kansas City, although it has forty-five hundred people, is a finalist for the new downtown ballpark for the Royals. They've got enough economic development that they're attracting a major league baseball team. Potentially. And that proposed area is adjacent to an industrial zoned area. So, further down that page, you're gonna see kind of comparing North Kansas City's zoning for industrial compared to Raytown's. Raytown's is more restrictive to, you can do industrial stuff, you can build stuff, you can do manufacturing. North Kansas City is kind of intermingled retail and service-based industries like breweries, distilleries, entertainment. That personally, I would like to see intermingled into our zoning code at this point, just to try and enhance economic development. So, I got that, on to the next page. So, the following page, that is the zoning map for downtown Kansas City, more specifically, the Crossroads Art District. And you'll see in that list below, there are way too many establishments for me to put on that map, make it a little cluttered, so, most of these places, I mean, these, these are meant to attract, attract people who want to go out to eat, who want to go out for an evening out. And when we get to amending the comprehensive plan, I'll get kind of into that, but this is a way to attract younger families into Raytown. It's a way to have service-based, above minimum wage jobs. And that's the ultimate goal of economic development, at least in my, in my opinion, is to create jobs. So, just, just for instance, within the main industrial zoned area within the Crossroads is basically Oak Street between I seventy and the rail yards. All the way over to east of seventy-one highway, kind of over by Eighteenth and Vine. So, you've got establishments like Mission Taco, Grinders Pizza, that's one of my favorite places to go, and it's an industrial area. Casual Animal Brewing. The Truman Event Space, they have a lot of big concerts there, the Guild Event Space, I've been to several weddings there, the Austin Event Space, I've been to weddings there, Paradise Garden Club, I've killed a lot of plants from there. I can go on and on, so, you get the gist of where I'm going with this. So, on the following page, it's kind of my, my proposal, and feel free to give me constructive criticism, totally shoot me down because we're just having a conversation and I'm open to criticism. So, like I said, many adjacent cities are loosening or amending their more intensive, intensive industrial uses. Oh, by the way, before they shut down for COVID, one of my favorite breakfast places, when I was up that early, Mike, used to be in the heaviest zone industrial area, I believe, in the city, in the Leeds Industrial Park by the old Leeds plant, which is the Leeds Diner. It was good. So, Raytown currently has, so my proposal, so Raytown currently has defined both recreation and entertainment indoor, so that's your bowling alleys, indoor mini golf, yada, yada, yada. We also have defined recreation and entertainment outdoor. Which is batting cages, driving range, drive-in movie theaters, mini golf, archery ranges. So. What you see below the definition and the ordinance is a snippet from our land use table where only residential and entertainment facilities indoor is in the land use table. I'd like to add the recreation and entertainment outdoor into the land use table and allow that into our M-zoned areas along with service-based and restaurant uses within the M zoning district. So. I believe that this will be a catalyst for economic development, just like Crane went in there, excuse me, Crane went in down in that area. I think this could be a catalyst for something bigger and greater, especially coming up for the FIFA World Cup in Raytown, I think we could be done with some sort of economic development by then. So, like I said, a catalyst for economic development, job growth, and increased tourism within our community, so, I will open that up for critiques.
Anyone? Anybody want to pop in some ideas, Ms. Gardner?
I don't have any critiques, I think it's great that this is the suggestion in moving forward, especially based on our retreat that we had, talking about the comprehensive plan and how we update it and how we increase economic development here. I know that, you talked about the Crossroads, I know that UMKC had done a study a while back that indicated, prior to Kansas City passing policies for that particular area, the average income in that area was forty thousand, and now I think it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand because of some of the policies they put in place to increase the development there. So, it does go back to that job creation and wages, so I think that's great.
Ms. Hayden.
So, we're talking about mainly down in the, where Crane is, now, you said there was two other places, like.
Yes.
That we would try to rezone.
Not necessarily rezone, but the M zoning would allow for those additional uses, so, they, they wouldn't necessarily be rezoned, but in those areas, you could put a restaurant in. Which, most of that's built out along, between Fifty-first and, I guess Crescent Creek, so on Raytown Road, most of that's built out. There's some infill areas around Crane, which I, I see that being probably the spark point, and then there's a little bit of green field along three fifty highway, but. Could you put a restaurant in, yeah.
But we do know that the, that the, the trail go along that, so that would be a great way to develop that whole little area there. And I did attend the FIFA meeting today, and they're talking about all the things that the community can do to really enhance the experience. And so, Raytown's in a perfect place to do that, but, you know, we need to get started now, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Especially having, but getting to the comprehensive plan later, one of the things I want to make sure is we bolster the Rock Island Corridor, and because that's an unofficial trailhead that, or hopefully official trailhead soon, but I, I think there's a lot of good things that could come of this, I think the benefits outweigh the costs.
Mayor, I just need to clarify a point, sorry, if I'm any, along Raytown Road, that is a neighborhood commercial already, from the Trail West along Raytown Road.
Right.
The manufacturing zoning is Trail East along Fifty-first Street, Fifty-third Street, and Fifty-sixth Street. I just wanted to clarify that because you already have the zone you're asking for, that's running adjacent to Raytown Road to the city limits, that's neighborhood commercial already. It gives no appearance of industrial because those businesses have grandfathered and changed ownerships consistently, so that that hasn't ceased, but they're really zoned neighborhood commercial, so he's asking the complement, what's adjacent to, but east of the trail.
Ms. Cresek.
Are you aware of anybody that would be interested in investing in this right now? Do you already have some ideas of folks that might?
I've had, I've heard rumblings, but I've never, I've never had official talks with anyone.
Cresek.
Bill Van Buisker.
Thank you, sir. A part of that area that Nessie is talking about is what, where Dirty Dons is at, and.
Yeah.
The affinity, right, that strip. Okay, very good. Yeah, I think it's a good idea, I think it. It certainly is not going to do any harm, and chances are, it's probably going to do some good, and I think it is a good move to do that. Thank you. Appreciate your work on it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? You done?
I'm done with that one.
Okay. No.
No.
Before we move on, so what, what are we getting from this? Like, is the direction to move forward trying to do this, or what?
You know, I would.
What are you as?
I would entertain a motion, I know you guys are swamped, and you guys know I like to do my own work, so, the rental regulations I wrote pretty much. I would be okay with direction for me to write an ordinance to amend Chapter fifty. Do I need that? Jennifer, would I, would I need that? Or can I just bring it forward?
Just bring.
I, I would just, I would say I just bring it forward.
Yes, I don't think you have to make a motion to do that.
Because I, it sounds like I kind of have an unofficial nod of the head to go ahead and, and then we can flesh it out as need be going forward.
Right, now, if you wanted staff to draft that, that would be, that one then probably require a motion to direct staff to do it if that's the case, but it sounds like if you're gonna do that, then I think you can do that and bring it forward. Keeping in mind, though, that any changes to the comprehensive plan actually go through the Planning Commission.
Right.
They really don't come back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
That works.
Ms. Mims.
I was just making sure that where he was headed with that, letting him know that it was an emotion that was going to be needed, if he's gonna draw it up himself and then bring it back.
Yeah, that's what she was saying.
Oh. When our attorney brought it forth, I was like, I'll be quiet.
He'll, he'll still have to go get it through. Bill Van Buisker.
I guess my question is, if Mr. Myers does that, will it need to be reviewed by our legal staff prior?
Yes, that's what we were just talking about, it has to go in front, she has to look at it before we go forward.
And his staff.
Yep.
Very good.
So, it sounds, sounds like I have homework, and I will make sure to keep staff in the loop on the development of that.
Okay, let's move on to comprehensive plan update number four.
Okay, dokey.
Oh, Ian Scott's with us, hi Ian.
Did. Okay, so the, my little PowerPoint thingy that distributed. Okay, so. See if I can run technology correctly. Yeah.
You're the young guy here.
Yeah, no pressure. How do you start it? Start. Slideshow, there we go. From the beginning. Okay, so we are on comprehensive plan, so I threw this together this afternoon, for anybody that knows me, I like bullet points and straight to the fact kind of stuff, so. Little bit of background about a comprehensive plan, you know, in the, the last few months, we've, we've had to go through the comprehensive plan, and the fact that it was last updated in November nineteen ninety-six, when I was in second grade, we, we need to work on that. So, it was, it was adopted in ninety-six, revised in oh one, and again in oh seven to include the Central Business District Plan as a three fifty highway corridor overlay. In twenty sixteen, P and Z took a look at it, and they had some suggestions, I went back through some old study sessions, and the course of the rabbit hole, I went down to develop this. So, for a comprehensive plan, housekeeping, I won't read it for you, but really, planning and zoning found that there were dated definitions, dated survey data, and just overall data is dated and needs to be thoroughly reviewed. Some good points about the, the comprehensive plan is that a large number of recommendations from the original plan have been met, so we can scratch those off the to-do list and add some more stuff to the to-do list. Their main recommendation was Raytown has changed considerably since nineteen ninety-six. And a good comprehensive plan has to adapt to the community and the way that it changes, so, as such, we need new goals to be identified as we move the community forward, so. That's all up to the community's vision and how they want to go forward with that. Just my own two cents, in terms of the comprehensive plan, especially within our commercial areas, downtown areas, central business district, whatever you want to call it, density, lots of density. You go to places like downtown Lenexa, obviously downtown Kansas City, they have, they have density, and that's what a true central business district should look like. Downtown Lee Summit, it gives you the, the, the feel, the look of density, you go down to downtown Lee Summit, you can walk everywhere. That, that's my own two cents, that's what I like to see, just as developing a, a go-to, what I envision Raytown to be, I want to be able to, I want it to be like a mini Kansas City where I, you know, I live downtown, I can take the streetcar to work, I can ride my bike, and. Go from there, also want to cultivate Raytown's role in the metro area, I want to make sure that Raytown has a seat at the metro wide table when it comes to economic development, I don't want to be the laughing stock of Kansas City. And obviously, we, we have to continue to serve for funding and revenue opportunities in terms of infrastructure, so that way, the city as a whole has curb appeal, new buildings, clean-looking buildings, community development, you know, everyone working together to accomplish the same goal. So, you know, I've always, I've always told people that if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So, in developing a comprehensive plan, I mean, it's in the title, you have to plan. Same, same processes, like what I do at work, to write an appraisal, you have to gather data, you have to analyze the data, and then you report the data. It's not rocket science, it's a very thirty thousand foot look, we can do a SWOT analysis and identify the community's problems, the issues and concerns, and to see if we can alleviate that through comprehensive planning, tweaking of the zoning ordinance, like I just brought up, et cetera. Develop plan goals, plan options, preferred plan, and then at the end of the day, we adopt the plan and set a schedule for those things to get done, so if you don't set a schedule, it's never going to get done. And then, as, as that plan's implemented, you monitor for results and impacts, and if you need to tweak something, you tweak something. So, a general comprehensive plan feature, you've got your land use, for Raytown, that's going to be predominantly housing businesses, and obviously, our, we do have, we do have a small industrial impact. Obviously, transportation is an issue when forming a comprehensive plan as well as infrastructure. The only part is, you know, obviously, our water department is not part of the city, so I don't know why I put it in that bullet point, and we're also working with the Parks Department, as well as tackling economic development and trying to accomplish getting new opportunity and dealing with our issues.
Ms. Henry, if you note that Mr. Walters made it at six twenty, I'm sorry, six twenty-six.
So, some uniqueness to Raytown, obviously, we're a bedroom community, I mean, the majority of our land use is residential, so focusing on neighborhood revitalization. You know, at least in my neighborhood, I can tell you, I've seen lots and lots of dumpsters over the last few months, out in front of houses, people flipping houses, buying houses, leasing houses. The moral of the story is houses are being renovated and selling at a higher price point, so that, that's moving in the right direction. And like I touched on with the last agenda item, communities for all ages, I do recognize that Raytown is an older community, we have, we have one of the higher median ages within the metro area. So, we have to take care of our, our older neighbors, but at the same time, we have to embrace bringing in new neighbors, bringing in younger neighbors, bringing in small families, bringing in, you know, single people that want a place to go out to go have a drink and go on a date and go out to eat. And then finally bolstering the Rock Island Corridor, this is a gold, this is a gem to our community, and it needs to be embraced and really focused on within the comprehensive plan. So, where do we go from here? So. You got a budget for it, and I don't know if city staff is planning on putting that in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, part of the reason I'm doing this discussion tonight is so we are aware of, you know, I would like to see some of this stuff end up in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we can talk about it. But if we want to do it in-house, we can do it in-house and save money, I know that we're short-staffed, I know the last time that we did this, I believe we farmed it out to a third-party consultant who did the comprehensive plan, that would save time, and, you know, if we end up with a. Budget reserve for the year, I don't, I don't know if we have, we'll end up having a fun balance or not, you know, a one-time expenditure may be worth updating something that's over twenty-five years old. Internal audit, and then, like I said, hire a planning consultant if need be, so, I believe that is the last slide, I will open it up again for me to be a punching bag.
All right, anyone have any comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking forward to seeing this get started with this, but at the same time, what is, what is the plan to get it started? We want to start, or we looking at input, well, we're gonna have to have input from the staff to see where we stand at with it. Don't you laugh at that? Because we are gonna need input.
Yeah, we talked about this.
And that is true.
At the meeting, talked about this to, at our strategic planning, and it's already going to be in the budget.
Perfect.
It was something that you and your colleagues have brought up to us before, we brought up in the previous time, even when we went for the GO bonds, talked about what it is to create a community plan. Previously, just want, kind of get, and it will be an outside consultant.
Okay.
A majority is, majority of communities, you have to use some type of consultation in order to not even do that, just the outreach portion of it, we'll take that, but also, just internally, you know, you, it takes a lot even when you have outside consultants. I want people to understand, when you have a consultant, does not mean they take all the work out of city staff.
Right.
City staff still has to provide it, no, no different than if yourself, when you're doing something, we still have to provide that, that direction and that, that expertise regarding that, so, we have it in the budget, resident to you all, this coming August, including that portion. The other thing is, you know, before, looking at the one that was done before, one of the things was looking at a committee that was created for it, I think previously, that committee was probably about fifteen people.
Yes.
Around that size, that would help, so, and people did it different ways. One of the most recent ones, like, for instance, Miss Lee Summit, talked to them even well before this, you know, Steve Orville, before he retired, heck, theirs was going on for thirty years, you know, so, you know, and now they're kind of bringing it to fruition. They did a combination of both their planning and zoning board, along with their board of city council, worked together, met together, and then provided feedback and went back and forth, so, it's a, it's not just a set in stone document, it's a fluid document, and so, but you need input on both sides in order to move forward, so.
So, my, I guess my question, I forgot to ask this, this may be a Jennifer question, so process, process-wise, so, we hire a consultant, we do it, it comes back, does it go through P and Z first, or does it go through us, or what, I guess, what's the process?
Right, so, by.
Um, right, so by statute, and this is, I apologize, I need to clarify. When you were talking about amendments to chapter fifty, you were correct. They have to go to the planning commission first for them to make a recommendation and then those changes would come before this board.
Okay.
Um, comprehensive plan is different under state statute, it goes to the planning commission and that's where they make the recommendation. They make the determination for that plan. It doesn't come back to here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Garza, I'm sorry, Mr. Walters and then Ms. Garza.
First, my apologies. Uh, I would ask if everybody could speak up a little bit more, get a little bit closer to the microphones because it's, it's hard to pick up some of what's being said, uh, at least for me anyway. Um, anyway, I, I remember when we did the last comprehensive plan and came here in Raytown. And I do not think I was on the board at the time, however, I was leading into it. And they took full advantage of the talent within Raytown to make this happen. So, uh, and I think that it's important that this be a community effort and that we reach out to people in Raytown, form a committee there and then have them work with your people, not just, not just with city staff, but also with the consultant. Consultant was very big in helping to form that committee.
That's what I said.
Yeah. Little trouble.
I mean, that's one of the main aspects of it. That's why it's community plan. You want to reach out to community to get the input back from community.
Yeah.
And that's what you.
As I remember, it was a long process too. It, it took six months before.
No, probably longer than that.
It was longer?
Yeah, more likely. Uh, I mean, ninety-six, I was in college, but, uh, I'm pretty sure in ninety-six, it took quite, quite a bit of time. I mean, typically you're talking by more like a year. I mean, once you start getting all the input.
Whatever it takes, but we want to make sure that this, that the community is signed in on it. That, that's the most important part.
Yeah.
Well, that's all I have at this time.
And then Bill Van Busker.
Yes, I know you kind of touched on it, Damon, about, um, our retreat and that was part of the conversation. And so how will the information that she gathered from the retreat kind of play into this and, and be a part of it? Um, since we all kind of identified certain things that we wanted to see, especially when it came to the comprehensive plan.
Repeat that one more time, I'm not getting, are you asking how the retreat, I mean,
Turn on your mic.
Within the plan itself?
Will they take that information that was gathered by, um, the lady that oversaw our retreat and kind of broke everything down and provided it with the dynamics of it?
With those plans, they will take what you did strategic planning wise, so be wanting the genesis of that actual plan. But when we bring a consultant in, they're gonna look at not only what we've done in the past to help go from there, kind of check off, like Alderman Myers mentioned. Already look at what you've already done and then look at what you're trying to move forward with. And part of that visioning and goals that you have as far as economic development, pod areas, things like that, they'll start looking from that direction. And as far as input from you as a board, uh, that's what I mentioned before, like the way Lee Summit did it, they had both the city council and the planning zoning work together to provide feedback, get their input on it. I mean, literally meeting together at the same time. So, uh, you know, we haven't got that set just yet, but that would be something you have, you have to look at. How we want to do that, how you want to set up the meetings, how you want to set up the, the, the community meetings, along with how you want to set up your, your committee. I mean, before you did a committee that included both city staff as well as, along with, uh, uh, the citizens, uh, throughout. Um, now it's probably about a board of about fifteen, uh, so that might be a concept there. So kind of looking at those different types of, uh, methods in order to move forward. But ultimately, the biggest thing you want to go is get a buy-in from the community, understand that you as leadership providing your input. And also like looking at what is a goal for the overall city. And, uh, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward. You want to create a city that people can come by, continue to build their family, continue to live here and continue to prosper, so.
Thank you.
Ms. M.
I think Damon pretty much touched on where I was going because it's basically laying out an outline. And first you gotta have something so that you have a guidance on which way to start it. So in doing, and so he's already hit it, but it's putting the outline together, knowing which area that you want to establish and where they're going to be. The timeline and then where, who's meeting where and when, but then to encompass everybody together. So where you were hitting Ryan and Damon? Yep.
Yes.
Thank.
Okay, Bill Van Busker.
Thank you. I, our, uh, counsel answered. Or the, one of the questions I had relative to planning and zoning and their involvement, uh, because that's something I was going to ask about, I think that's a pretty important part of it. Um, you know, in the past, um, dollars have been spent and, uh, lots of time and energy by staff and consultants. Um, without any real visible results. It just didn't go anywhere and big plans and nothing happened. I, I do, we need to be careful that we don't budget a lot and spend a lot without some visible results. We want to make sure something happens from this. And, you know, you can't guarantee that. I understand that. You know, we can't look at a crystal ball and know exactly what's going to happen. We don't know what the economy is going to do. That's a big factor. Hopefully at some point it's going to get better than it is right now. But if that happens, that will be, uh, that will be a plus for us. But I think in looking forward, this is something we, we need to do. We need to look at and we need to, uh, uh, attack this. Uh, because it is, is a problem, has been a problem for us and, and, uh, uh, it'll enable us to move forward and, and, uh, be a more vibrant community, I hope.
I, I was going to go back to, uh, the plan. But the plan also has to have goals. And, but we have to reiterate continuously what those goals are and then mark them off. So sometimes when you've been on something, you've done something for so long, lose sight of what you've done. Because a lot of the plans we've done in the past, I mean, even when we just look at what our goals were for the greatest strategic planning, we reached most of those. And then you continue going on and most of them are fluid. When you think economic development, do not just think I'm done. You gotta think of what's next. Because if you start thinking I'm done, then you are done. But when you start looking at, when, yeah, let's look at infrastructure. There's no point in a pin on a map that you say I'm done, every single thing is brand new. And I'm not, can't continue doing something because there is continuation of maintenance beyond that. So when you start seeing, saying that, um, I agree with you. We don't want to lose sight of what we've done though, because we have done many things and many of the plans have come to fruition and then moved forward. But we have to reiterate and also celebrate those opportunities and then continue moving forward. Because it gets a little mundane if you do it and never remember what you've done. And we've done quite a bit. So with this plan, which we will get the plan done, then we'll come up with goals from that plan and then move forward. And then also remind ourselves of those goals as we do each budget year. And that's part of doing a strategic planner is reminding ourselves of those goals. So we move forward, get those goals done and come back for the next year, the next, and the year after that.
I agree, I, I wasn't quite finished to respond to what he, what he was saying at, at first if I could. Just, it is an ongoing process. I, I agree certainly, and we have accomplished a lot of things. Not saying we haven't, uh, we've been going in the right direction with a lot of things. In the past, there's been some, some things that were done that money was spent and, uh, you know, plans were made that actually ended up that were not fruitful and, and maybe did some harm. In fact, we just have to be careful about that. You can't, you know, like I say, you can't look at a crystal ball and know what's, what's coming, what's going to happen, but I think we'll be going in the right direction doing this.
Are you finished, Mr. Van Busker?
This time I am.
Okay, Ms. M, it's your turn.
And, and pretty much I think both of you said it, but it's basically stay focused on, focused and then organizing and strategizing. Exactly. Because as it was said before, a whole lot of people that are here now that wasn't there then, you had some issues. And things that didn't come to fruition, but you also had people trying to take over in different areas just for, for gender purposes and to get their points through. So that's why you say you gotta stay focused and then stay organized on what it is that we're trying, what the goal is, the ultimate goal. So you got your goal here and then you're organizing how you want to take that and work with it. And that, I think that's what I heard on both ends here.
So, so as long as you, you said we're budgeted, we're proposed budgeted for. So I guess we really don't need to give staff direction, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right. And we will move on to, thank you for your presentation. Very well done. Ms. Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I apologize for having to bring this before the committee of the whole, but I've had difficulty obtaining the information that I requested via email on November the eighth of last year, two thousand twenty-two, concerning what the city of Raytown paid that the Walmart TIF sales tax payments did not cover prior to when Alderman Myers brought forward the, uh, refinancing of the TIF bond and its approval. I also requested the date of when the Walmart TIF would be paid off. I've had numerous conversations regarding why I have not received this information. Reasons given to me were because of COVID, because of staff shortage, because of the information that was about to be given to me was not the right information. So it would need to be returned so I could be given the proper information. Several months ago, I received a call from the city administrator and the assistant city administrator asking once again what I wanted. And they said they would look into it. On May first, I received an email stating that I would receive the information as the city now had a new finance director. However, I still do not have received, I have not received the information I requested after seven months of correspondence. So I submitted a sunshine request on June the eighth to obtain this information. Our city clerk stated that there was no record of the information available and consequently the information could not be provided to me. I am dismayed as well as concerned that there is no record of this financial information when this was one of the most financially significant projects that has ever affected Raytown. After further investigation, I found that the board of Alderman can task the staff to provide a report of the monies that the city paid that the Walmart sales tax did not cover prior to the TIF financing. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to direct the staff to furnish the information pertaining to the Walmart TIF that the city of Raytown had to pay because the sales tax from Walmart did not cover the TIF payments prior to the TIF refinancing. And to direct the staff to furnish the date as to when the Walmart TIF will be paid off. Thank you.
So what exact, just can you, what exactly is your motion?
To direct the staff to provide this information on the sales tax that Walmart did not pay their, their sales tax did not pay that the city had to pay and then when the TIF will be paid off.
Okay, Ted, in what time period are you talking about? I just want to be clear on this so that he's clear and I'm clear.
Well, at least three months. I waited since November.
So for three months?
No, I'm, what do you mean? No, I want to, prior, prior to when the trip, when the TIF was refinanced.
Oh, okay. You get all that, Ms. Henry?
No, sir, I did not. So the prior to the TIF paying, uh, the, I don't know the date timeframe.
Prior to when the TIF was refinanced.
How, how far years wise, what are you wanting?
At least seven years.
You want seven years prior to refinancing?
Yes, please. And then when the TIF will be paid off.
Can I ask a question of clarification?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, are you asking when Project One is going to be paid off or Project Two or both? Because Project Two is the developer pay as you go, so I just want clarification in your motion. Since we have two projects in the TIF district.
But the Walmart one.
Project One includes Walmart, yes, ma'am. That's what you're asking for?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Teresa, can you read what you have? Make sure we're all on the same page.
Give me just a second, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Walters, hang on just a minute.
We need a second.
Hang on just a minute.
I am hanging.
Alderman Emerson.
I'm sorry.
I was asking for Alderman Emerson. I want to repeat, I pulled up her sunshine law request. The, any monies that the city had to pay for TIF payments for Walmart that the sales tax did not pay. The last request was for three years prior to the refinancing. As I've not received, I'm making a sunshine request seven years prior to refinancing of the TIF. Would that be correct?
Yes.
All right, I'm cut and paste that.
Mr. Walters.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make a second.
We have a motion. Okay, hang on just a second. So everybody understand?
Well, yeah, we had our button ready over here to go.
I'm sorry, Ms. M.
No, we had our buttons ready, but.
Emerson has a motion second by Mr. Walters. Uh, Ms. M, do you have something?
No, 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 I had my light, but I said, uh, Alderman Walters, he got there.
Okay.
That's fine.
Larita.
I just want clarification, so we are.
Mic on, mic on.
Um, I just need a clarification. Is it two different things that we're voting on? We're voting on when the TIF will be paid for them to research that and also the, um, sales tax, the amount of uh, monies that the city, city had to pay.
It's all in one motion because it's, it's easy, that's easy enough to get the end date, that's pretty easy. So, Bill Van Busker.
Yeah, I was thinking that TIF information is available to here when we go through the budget, um, and letting us know when, when the TIF will be paid. And I know that changed when we refinanced bonds. And how, how many, how large an area is included in that TIF? Just one business mentioned, but there's several there, right? Yes, you, you could probably answer that.
The TIF district as a whole goes, runs from Walmart area down to the corner of Raytown Road and three fifty highway that includes the car wash, Freddy's, IHOP. It also includes the Dutch Brothers and includes all of those businesses in between. But the improvements are well more than that because improvements were made to relocate the school district and pay for improvements around Raytown South High School, from the high, the school district building. Just the retail sales area that's contributing to make debt service payment and reimburse the developer.
Okay, hey, what, what is it that you don't know that you need to know exactly? I guess I need to know that before I vote on this. I, I'm curious as to what it is, the information you don't have or haven't had.
They say there is, they have never generated a record of the money that has not, that the city itself had to pay, that Walmart sales tax did not pay.
Okay, you're talking about the sales tax for that whole area, right? It's not just the one business. It includes Ace Hardware and those other businesses, is that correct?
I have been asked by several constituents about this, that, the latter part of last year, and I've still not been able to get this information.
Okay, did, she was specifically saying one business. I'm asking the question too, is that include all the businesses that are in that TIF district? As far as taxes that you're, to pay off the TIF. Is there enough tax generated from that whole TIF area?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, I, I would like to say that the payoff date is twenty thirty-one. It's located within our budget, sheet seventy-two that shows all the long-term debt.
Thank you.
So.
Okay. Mr. Walters.
Yes, I do have one other question along the same lines, um. I'm, I'm curious because I'm, Bill, I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know if anybody up here does know how much has been paid by the city to make up for shortfalls in revenue from the. In revenue from the TIF district. And I think that it's important that we do know it. If we go forward with any other projects, so we can see the shortfalls and what caused them and why they, why they happen. Um, I don't know why we wouldn't want to know about all of them. Going back further than the seven years, if there is others, I do not know. And I, I don't think it would be inappropriate to find out as long as you're looking up all that information, might as well get it all.
What information are you saying that you don't know?
Same, I don't know, her motion specifically says to go back seven years. Okay. I don't know any, uh, I can't tell you how much. I do know that there have been some shortfalls. I do not know how much they were. I do not know when they occurred on, uh, revenue being produced by the vendors to pay for the, uh. Payments to the, uh, to the people that were loaning the money to us basically, to this, to the TIF district. But the city, I do know that we are on, we are on the hook for it. And, uh, I didn't.
And when you created the TIF, you, you had a dedicated fifty percent tax to go.
City created the TIF, I did not.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was on the other side of that coin.
I wasn't saying you created the TIF. I know you can create the TIF. I'm saying when the credit, the TIF was created, it was, uh, so, I mean, I'm looking for clarification that, you know, I. We hear, it's nothing that needs to be. Um, as far as what, um, Alderman Emerson is referring to regarding the, we don't have a document that states what we pay for every TIF. And made every payment, we do not. We do try to provide it in every single budget since we've been here and we do provide it as part of the, uh, audit. Uh, as far as those items regarding that, that's fine. We have no problem to try to produce what we can. But those items, what we have is information-wise. And information-wise, when we went and refinanced and pushed the refinancing of the TIF. Uh, was to try to get some items, uh, put together, figure out exactly how we can do, take advantage of, 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 uh, a lower interest rate. So we can remove some payments, which it did decrease the amount of payments that we had to make payments, I mean, that we had to make. Uh, so, and no problem providing that information. Uh, we do it, I mean, you'll, the, the TIF are presented in this next part. When you start talking about your mid-year, so.
All right, Mr. Van Busker, you're gonna be it because we need to take a vote here. It's coming up on our seven o'clock hour to start our regular meeting. So. Go ahead and.
Yeah, I felt like it's something that we have had that information, um, in our budgets. And through our audit and I, so. And I believe that information's been provided to us and it's one reason that we did refinance the bonds was so there wouldn't be a shortfall. And that's what, you know, that's why that was done. Uh, part of why it was done, it would save the city a lot of money and the taxpayers in the long run. Um, but, uh, I, I don't see any harm in gathering information and getting it. You know, uh, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be real hard to, to get that information and provide it. So I'm okay.
All right, Ms. Henry, color roll.
Alderman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Alderman Kresek?
Yes.
Alderman Asia?
Captain.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Alderman Mims?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
All right, motion.
Did they, did, what was the timeframe on the motion?
We have seven years before refinancing.
No, I'm talking about as far as when, when you, when would you like that information back to you?
Oh.
Who do you want the information back to?
Soon as it's available, at least.
After, I mean, like I said before, we. You give us to after the budget to try to provide that information. I mean, you say, I understand that you said that it's readily available. It's not readily available. We literally got to go through every budget since two thousand and seven. To figure out what that is. So that's why it has not been there.
October, November, correct.
Well, at the time I did not have a finance director, so, but there's no reason for us to make that a, a scenario. I'm just asking, when would you like for it to be done?
As soon as you can get it done. I guess I've waited on seven months, so what's a few more?
Part of that will be in the budget, yes. Mr. Scott? Gonna pass, Brad?
Sorry, what was the question?
Are you gonna vote on this? I didn't hear your vote.
I voted yes.
Okay. I thought he said pass too. Okay. Motion carries. Okay, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Some.
All right, we are adjourned at seven oh two PM.